Okay, good evening, everybody. A call to order the town council meeting for February 5th, 2019 at 7:00 here at the Town Hall. This is being recorded by WCAT. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Detective Michael Delahanty, who we celebrated his life last week. I'll have a few comments after we just pause for a few minutes. Last week, we celebrated the life of Michael Delahanty, dedicated and loyal police officer that served this community for over 25 years. He was a good man. He was a great police officer, always ready to go above and beyond to serve the needs of the community. He was a true public service servant. His many years of dedicated service outside his role as a police officer was evident in his outstanding work with Winark in organizing the, every year, the Driscoll-Megan Invitational Meet. Michael was always ready to step up and volunteer, whether it was a project or a program for the seniors on some special event for the youth. He will truly be missed. Please keep his family and the members of the Winthrop Police Department in your prayers. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilor Inman here. Councilor Callan?
Present.
Councilor Kristofon?
Here.
Councilor Terry? Councilor Lusardo? Councilor LaConti?
Present.
Vice President Boncory? Vice President Vecchia?
Present. I want to take a motion to approve the minutes of the January 22nd Town Council meeting. Circulated motion, second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? One abstention? We originally had on the agenda for Chief Flanagan to be here, but that's been postponed. We do now have a presentation by the Winthrop Board of Health, specifically our Public Health Nurse Meredith Hurley. Welcome, Meredith.
Thank you.
Public health director. Just wanted to make that clarification. Not public health nurse.
Well, I'm just reading from the script.
Yeah.
Sorry, Meredith.
Credit where's credit is due.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. So, thank you, guys. I'm here today to talk to you because we are currently in the process of undertaking our next Community Health Needs Assessment. The last one that we did was in 2014. That was completed, and we got a lot of information out of that. This time around, we're doing something a little bit different, and it's termed an ICHNA, Integrated Community Health Needs Assessment, because we're tagging up with Revere and Chelsea as part of the North Suffolk Public Health Collaborative. So, just to kind of remind you if you are unaware or not on the council at that point, back in 2016 with the facilitation of MAPC, the North Suffolk Public Health Collaborative was established, and the role is to kind of fill in the gaps of public health in all of our communities. We found that we were missing out on a lot of opportunities because we're being flanked by Boston, we're being flanked by larger urban areas, so we tried to combine all of our strengths so that we can attack some of our weaknesses. The executive director is Jeff Stone. He's here tonight, and he's been leading a lot of this work. So, what is a Community Health Needs Assessment? So, it's a systematic explanation of the health status indicators for a given population that is used to identify key problems and assets in the community. So, what does that really mean? So, that means that there's a lot of different ways to measure our health picture for our community. We have health equity, we have, you know, overdose rates, we have cancer incidents, but we also measure access to food, housing stability, and how these are predictors of the overall health and wellness of our community. It's a variety of tools and processes that may be used to conduct this assessment. The essential ingredients are community engagement and collaborative participation, which is kind of why I'm here tonight talking to you guys, because this is going to be, you're probably going to hear me talking about it a lot in the next few months. So, the true process of it is, it's a five-star, five-step process. The needs planning is the first step, and then we conduct the assessment, review the data, record and consolidate all the data, and at the end of this, we're going to have an action plan developed through Mass General, Center for Community Health Improvement. They worked with us on the last one. Up to this point, this launched in July of 2018, so we've had a lot of engagement already with some key people here in town. There are three subcommittees that are driving this work currently. The steering subcommittee, which is comprised of Austin as the Town Manager, Susan McGuire from the Winthrop Board of Health, Leanna Ruzioni from CASA, and myself, and also Deanna Fraturo had started this work before she left. Deanna still sits on the Community Engagement Subcommittee as a community member, and then the Survey Instruments Subcommittee with Susan McGuire. So, that's a subcommittee that put together the survey that we're pushing out to people, which should be starting in the next few weeks. So, when we did this last in 2014, we gained a really good picture of what was going on in Winthrop, and from that, we were able to use this data to drive grants and other programs that we were trying to get here, because we were able to capture a lot of things, particularly around the substance misuse and the mental health disparities that we're seeing in town. So, it's, I've got a lot of traction out of this from 2014, but it's becoming somewhat that we need to re-update it. So, I'm really looking forward, it's going to be a lot of work, but I look forward to kind of doing it so that we can continue to move forward. The CLEAR Program and the CIT Program were direct results of the data that we captured in 2014, so, you know, these are things that have been completely impacting positively the health outcomes of the town, so we want to just kind of keep that going forward. So, the way that we're going to capture the data is an online survey, a paper survey, focus groups, and key informants, and then, in addition, use the PNA that CASA facilitated, DPH Statistics, and also the Cancer Registry, so we're going to kind of pile all of those together and give you a good snapshot of what is currently happening. All of the surveys will be available, not only in English, but they've already been translated into Spanish, Portuguese, and Arabic, and it's the same survey across all three communities. You'll be able to, so it's all accessible online at www.northsufficassessment.org. It's also going to be on our town website. Some key details about the survey, it's totally anonymous. For anybody that completes it, you can be entered into a drawing for a $50 Market Basket gift card. It's about 66 questions. I took it the other day online. It took me about, I want to say, eight to 10 minutes to kind of go through it. I didn't add too much ad lib because it felt like it wasn't fair for me to add too much, like, of the open response questions, so, but the, just the rating of the overall health. So, right now, currently, we are in the process of doing the online surveys. Just this week, we started putting together a community assessment team, so we want to really try and engage as many sectors as we possibly can. First responders, schools, council on aging, veterans, clergy, youth, youth providers, medical and social service providers, the business community, the environmental community, environmental justice, LGBTQ, and a lot of the cultural organizations. So, a lot of these folks, we're going to try and schedule focus groups and also key informant interviews with that will add into our data set. An interesting piece is that, is that through NGH, the Center for Community Health Improvement, they've been able to provide some funding so that we can train one or two youth in our community to facilitate focus groups within the youth. So, I feel like they talk better to their peers, so we're hoping to capture some additional information that maybe the PNA wasn't able to provide us, so that we can, you know, use that to direct some of our preventative care. In March, it's going to be ongoing with the focus groups, the key informants, online survey. As of right now, the paper surveys and the online surveys should be completed by the end of March, and then, starting in April through June, early July, is when all the data collection and analysis is going to happen, and hopefully by July, we'll be able to do a larger scale announcement of what has been found in all three communities, what the plan is, and what the main priorities are for all of them. And currently, just this week, the Winthrop Public Health started their own Twitter, so we're trying to push that out there, and our own Facebook page, so I'm going to start pushing a lot of information out through there, too, tagged in with the town website and the town social media and things like that, so, to try and engage those younger, the younger folks, so, that's kind of it. Do you guys have any questions? For me, for Jeff, for Susan, for Bill? Oh, Jeff, Jeff probably, oh, Jeff has press releases, too, that are going to be going out.
Where can I stand to speak where you are?
Mm-hmm.
I don't plan this to you. I just have 1:00 coming right here. This is, thank you for allowing me to speak a little bit about this, and thank you, Meredith. I thought it was an excellent description of what we're doing. This is very timely that Meredith is presenting, because this press release is dated today, and what it says is, "Revere, Chelsea, and Winthrop launch region-wide Community Health Needs Assessment, plan to conduct hundreds of resident surveys and focus groups." And those hundreds will go into, could be a couple of thousand between the three communities. We're really pushing for residents, as Meredith said, to go online. This will be, the website will be promoted far and wide and fill out a survey. But one thing I wanted to mention is why we're doing this this way, and I wanted to add to what Meredith said. This is, she mentioned Mass General, Center for Community Health Improvement. Mass General is working collaboratively with Cambridge Health Alliance, Beth Israel Deaconess Healthcare, Melrose Wakefield Hospital, East Boston Neighborhood Health Center, North Suffolk Mental Health Association, CAPLAC, and other agencies in a multi-provider collaboration. This is new and unique. This has not been done this way before. Normally, these hospitals would do their own individual community health needs assessments, and they have to report them to the Attorney General and to the federal government, but they would do them on their own. This time, because Town Manager, initially Town Manager McKenna and Mayor Arigo and City Manager Ambrosino asked the providers to work together, and then, following Chief Delahanty and Town Manager Faison have continued that. So, they said, yes, we are willing to work together. These are hospitals that ordinarily are competitors. They fight for market share, as you know, but they're working totally collaboratively to collect data and feed it into one large report that Meredith mentioned, and a community health improvement plan that will be a guide for all three of our communities, as well as all those providers, and we will look for opportunities where we can collaborate, because, as you know, public health conditions don't necessarily know borders. We're all dealing with communicable diseases, we're dealing with adolescent mental health issues, we're dealing with substance use, et cetera. We already collaborate a little bit on some of these, but there are opportunities for us to do more, and so we're paying close attention to what we find. So, it's ambitious, and, as I said, it's unique and new that all the hospitals and the other health agencies are actually collaborating together to get the most comprehensive picture of the needs in all three of our communities.
Is there going to be an opportunity? I know that you said there's no borders and whatnot, but is there going to be an opportunity for Winthrop-specific data, or is it, are we taking it as all three communities?
Yes, that's a good question. We don't know the exact, we're working tomorrow, as a matter of fact, with a steering committee meeting. We're going to start to talk about what the look of the report is going to be, which will probably come out in August, September, will be the writing of the report. We will, I'm sure that we will look at the communities specifically. We'll say what's going on in Revere, what's going on in Winthrop, what's going on in Chelsea, but then we're going to try to look at a lens, like, through one lens, and say, well, what affects all communities, and where might we scale up a program that's working well in one community and scale it up to work with all three communities? We don't know exactly where this is going to take us, because we're tilling new ground here. That's what's exciting about it, but we've had extremely good turnout at the subcommittee meetings, very good participation by all the participants. Winthrop has been very involved at all stages, so, you have a lot to be proud of, I think, because Winthrop is really participating and contributing to this effort.
Any other questions or comments?
This is very timely. I know the airport has its committee, and I know we have a committee down in Pointe Shirley. They've been raising concerns because of the increased air traffic, noise, noise pollution, air pollution, so this is very timely in terms of them participating as better as all. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Okay, we have three public hearings, which I will open this evening and we're going to keep open, because we really can't do much with the items that are on each one of these public hearings, because they're all money hearing articles that we have to wait and get our finance committee to review them and make recommendations for the next meeting. So, I'll open them up and I'll keep them open, but if somebody has a comment, any of the councilors or public, please feel free. The first one is a motion to authorize bonding in the amount of $586,000 from the MWRA for the Center Business District Infrastructure Project. The hearing is open. Any comments or questions by the councilors? Hearing none. I'll open it for public comment. Hearing none. That will be suspended. The next one is a transfer of $105,600 from Capital Stabilization Fund to fund Phase Two of the design engineering of the Revere Street TIPS funds. Anybody wish to be heard in the council? Public comment? Hearing none. That'll be suspended as well. The last one is a transfer of $30,000 from the General Stabilization Fund to cover the Center Business District Master Plan, Phase Two. Anyone wish to be heard? Public comment? Hearing none. All of those three hearings will be suspended until the council meeting of 2/19/2019. And on that note, public comment. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the council, the Town Manager's Office, all the departments in the town, and, of course, my own department for their support in the last couple of weeks. Certainly been, you know, a tough month and a half here, losing two mics that have such a great imprint in the community, so I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank everyone, and certainly, you know, I think the first time since I've been a police officer that we had someone out injured as a result of cardiac incident in the police department that had passed away. Of course, we had Stephen Coney a couple of years ago passed away, but it wasn't, you know, it wasn't out injured in the line of duty. So, it was a very emotional time, and we certainly do appreciate everyone's support, the community's support, as well as the departments. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Terry. Anyone else on the public comment? Okay. Correspondents, we do have a couple. I did receive, all the councilors received a several-page correspondence from Frank Costantino relative to the development down the center and development in general. I won't read it into the record, but it will be put into the minutes of the meeting for the public to review. I did get a note from Dottie DiNoffrio, Precinct Four. She says, "I wish to publicly thank the council members all, and especially Councilwoman Jim LaTieri for his years of dedication to the town's youth and the Miller Field projects. Recently, I had the opportunity to stop by the construction site and met with the young man serving as the project manager for the Northeast Metro Tech High School building project on Miller Field. In our conversation, she learned that she had a connection with him because they were both from Waymouth, but we reminisced about the days every year that Waymouth vocational students would be allotted a parcel of land to build a home for sale. Our design for living classes would create, the interiors and the entire school population had some input, including the RE side of the coin. I only wish here in Winthrop we could address the fact that not all students are earmarked to attend college, and that trades are respected, necessary for a future skill set. This project on Miller Field is a fine example and shaping up very nicely. Again, my sincere appreciation to the town for their foresight, and kudos to Jim and your committee." Dottie DiNoffrio. Okay. Committee reports, we have none. There was a Miller Field update that I'll give you, even though we don't have an official committee report. A quick update on the roof of the, is going to be delivered, the trusses are going to be delivered around February 11th, and the roof sheathing will be installed that week as well. So, heavy interior work will then commence with plumbers and electricians. That's on the main building down at the field. So, that's moving right along. Thank God we had a mild winter.
Don't say that yet. Today was nice.
It's a mild winter.
Still perfect.
Even if it snows, it's going to go away very, very shortly.
Don't wish that money away.
Ten more months ago. Perfect.
Town Manager's report.
We are still in the middle of winter, so.
I feel it's over.
So, we are in the midst of the creation of the fiscal '20 budget right now. Myself and the Assistant Town Manager and the CFO all met with the Finance Committee last week and discussed some of our intentions and how we think the budget rollout will happen this year, so it's exciting. We should have some physical documents for you all in March, which will be nice, and then the ball can be in everyone else's court to kind of work through this process and understand both the opportunities that we have in the coming fiscal year and some of the constraints that we have with our finances as they currently are. Next meeting, so February 19th, the chief has a brochure here concerning the swearing-in ceremony of new officers. This will be taking place at 6:00 PM, the night of our next meeting on the 19th, so just wanted to throw this out there as an invite for everyone to come and participate. It's always nice to see new people come into these roles, because they are super important, and they are signing up for jobs that not a lot of people step up to play for. In terms of the council, Councilor Lusardo brought up a few months ago, looking, his intention to kind of seek out a charge and an ordinance concerning a Human Rights Commission or a Civil Rights Commission, that type of thing. I presented him with some information concerning the creation of a Civil and Human Rights Commission. I model, I gave him the information from Newton, Massachusetts. They recently updated in 2014 their ordinances concerning their Human Rights Commission, and I think it's a pretty good model for us to potentially follow, to deal with how we resolve disputes and how we have investigations into certain things. So, something to work on, but he should be putting at least potential draft language of a charge into rules and ordinances in the next couple of months. And then, for all of you here, I've been communicating with Denise, but we'll be having a training as a group for the council on February 23rd, on the morning of a Saturday. I apologize. It will only be a few hours, and I'll bring donuts, fancy donuts, I've promised. So, we'll all be there, and it will be good. And my last manager's note is, today is my son Cassius' first birthday, so, happy to be here, as always, but he turned one, and he's growing incredibly fast, so, yeah. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. School Department update. The school committee meeting last night, February 4th. Pre-K registration will start soon. The district is evaluating the program versus other communities as to how to structure the program regarding hours and days of operation and the possibility of the utilization of the space at the high school. The committee received a presentation by Lori Gavin, who is the Executive Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Accountability at the Winthrop School Systems regarding new updates on the school district's website as it pertains to curriculum, Winthrop Public Schools bullying plan, staff responsibilities, and professional development. The superintendent reports that the DA's office will be visiting the coming school to talk about internet and social media safety and security concerns with the students. The budget process is in full swing with countless meetings with the district's leadership team to discuss the goals and objectives for the coming fiscal year. And the school committee approved the 2018-2019 labor contracts for administrators, custodians, and cafeteria workers. Okay, under Old Business, we have the three items that we held a public hearing for, which are going to be carried over to the next meeting. We do have a motion that we would like to move tonight. It's a transfer of $5,000 from Free Cash to reimburse Performance Bond Deposit. I will read the motion. I move that the Town Council transfer $5,000 from Free Cash to fund 969 Performance, the Surety Bond Special Revenue Fund, in order to reimburse the Performance Bond Deposit made to the town on 10/6/2017, or take any other action thereto. Any second on the motion?
Second.
Second on the motion? Discussion on the motion?
Council President?
Yes.
Can we just get a briefing on what exactly this is and kind of the background of it?
I can give a little bit of that.
Please.
This is a private contract that renovated his own project and backed his own project. Typically, when a contractor goes in, their insurance company, you know, posts the bond. This gentleman was the licensed contractor for his own project, so he posted a $5,000 personal check, which was deposited into that fund. The project started in a prior fiscal year. This project is now complete. He's met all the orders, the conditions, and reimbursing the bond at this point.
Any further questions, comments? I'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Another motion. This is a return of a motion that we already approved under the emergency consideration. However, council informs us that we need now to reaffirm the vote under a general motion. So, the motion is, "I move that the Town Council vote to adopt Massachusetts General Law Chapter 100, Section B, effective from the January 15, 2019, emergency consideration vote, or take any other relative action thereto." If somebody will second the motion, I'll discuss it. I'll have a second? Okay. Basically, do you recall what this was for? This was, this was a protection of firefighters and police officers in terms of insurance coverage. That was the reason why we thought it was important. We had several firefighters and police officers here at the time, so. Any further discussion or questions?
What was the issue? We did vote on it.
We voted on it, but Council, Councilor Boncory insists that we now come back and take a second vote.
Because we voted as an emergency vote. Now we're just coming and reaffirming.
It says it in the charter that if we take an emergency motion that within 90 days, we need to affirm the emergency vote, so.
And we are doing that.
So, we already did it once, and now we need to affirm that the emergency went over.
Okay. With that, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. The next item is the reappointment of Paul Flanagan to the four-year term at the MWIA Board of Directors, term to expire February 15, 2023. That the Town Council approved the appointment made by Council President Vecchia to reappoint Paul Flanagan to the MWIA Board of Directors. Set appointment expires February 15, 2020. Excuse me. Yeah, 2023. Do I hear a second? A second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. The last item under New Business is a motion to authorize a bond in the amount of $259,500 from the MWRA's Local Financial Assistance Program. Austin, could you comment on this?
Sure, this is concerning inflow, infiltration, and it's a bond that we need to go out for. Steve? This is another funding split type of situation.
Every 10 years, municipalities are required to do an II plan, submit an II plan to DEP. It's a mandated, it's a mandated requirement for our permit. We're hoping to get this, the septumeters, you know, to measure the inflow, II in the spring, that's the time, you know, the best served to collect that data, and the distribution for that money is in March, so we're hoping to get that through. It's a 75% grant and a small match, so, and it's something that's mandated.
But we have the bond in the amount of the total amount, the 100%, not the 75%.
Right, right. 75% of that amount is a grant.
The motion is actually to refer this to finance.
Yeah.
So, with that, the motion is to refer it to finance. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, refer it to finance. Public comment? Quiet, please. Public relations. On March 16th, there is a fundraiser at the Larson Rink. I Like Mike, it's for Michael McDuffie, it's a fundraiser, and more information is on Facebook and more will be in the newspaper. Also, a reminder that the 2019 census forms are now due at the Clerk's Office at the Town Hall, and we will be reviewing shortly to fill the post vacated by the untimely death of Michael McDuffie in Precinct One. That vote will be taken on the 19th of February. We've got two folks that have sent in applications. It is open to anyone. If you live in Precinct One and you'd like to participate in town government, send us a note with a resume and why you'd like to be considered. With that, unless anybody else has anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.